Oh, great. Is she in state? Or is she, are you guys, are you gonna have to get off?
Yeah.
Welcome to the regular meeting of the Planning Commission on Tuesday, July twenty six, twenty twenty two. This meeting is called to order. I'll request staff to call the roll for commissioners who are present and not. Leslie.
Yes. Commissioner Harris is absent. Commissioner Higman is absent tonight. Commissioner Mercado. You. He's on mute.
Although, are you on mute?
My connection is a little off. You can't hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you now.
Now we can. Present is Commissioner Mercado. Commissioner Samuzi? Absent. Commissioner Shock?
Present.
Vice Chair Saudi?
Present.
And Chair Pravat Ali.
Present. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to the order of the agenda. Are there any changes to the order of the agenda? Hearing none. Next, we'll move on to the meeting procedures. Due to the COVID nineteen shelter in place order, we have had to establish new ways of conducting our public meetings. I'd like to ask staff to address how public comment will work this evening, Leslie.
Yes, this meeting is being recorded and streamed live to YouTube. Viewers are welcome to attend by telephone by calling six six nine nine hundred nine one two eight and entering the meeting ID, which is eight eight three two three eight four fourteen fifty two, then press pound, or you may watch directly through Zoom using the link on the agenda. If you are participating by telephone tonight and wish to provide comments, please press star nine. When the chair opens, the public comment period. Once you hear a notification that the host is inviting you to speak, please press star six to unmute yourself. At the chair's discretion, you'll have up to three minutes to speak. If you submitted comments prior to the meeting by email or letter, it has been forwarded to the Planning Commission. And closed captioning is available for this meeting using the icon at the bottom of the Zoom webinar screen or through the link on YouTube.
Great. Thank you very much. Let me know.
If I could just make a note for the record that Commissioner Samuzi has arrived.
Excellent. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks, Leslie. All right, let me now describe the meeting procedures. We will begin with a staff report. Members of the public will then be invited to speak. People on the conference call can speak when they receive the notification they have been asked to unmute themselves. Please keep comments to three minutes. Commission and design review, oh, don't have the design review board, right? Okay. No worries. It's all good. Commission and commission will have the opportunity to ask questions of staff, applicant, or public, or the public after each segment. We will close the public hearing and bring the matter back to the commission for discussion and action if necessary. All right, now for urgent communications. Anyone with an urgent communication on a topic not on the agenda may address the commission at this time. Please go ahead.
So I will let you all know that there is no one in attendance besides those that we see in front of us, so. But if you are somehow calling in and I don't see you, please press star nine to raise your hand.
Okay, great, thanks. Now we'll move on to the consent calendar. We have one item on the, oh, I'm sorry, there are two items on the consent calendar. The first is the approval of the Planning Commission meeting minutes of June twenty eighth, twenty twenty two, and the recommended action is to approve meetings as submitted. Are there any comments from the public on the consent calendar? Probably not, since there's no, I mean, online.
We do have someone now.
Okay, great.
If you, if you wish to speak on the content calendar, and it actually is only the one item, the approval of the minutes.
Okay, got it.
Um. Yes, please raise your hand using the raise your hand icon at the bottom of the screen. I think you're here in person, but if you are dialing in, please press star nine to raise your hand. And no one wishes to speak on the consent calendar.
Okay, great. All right. Now, since there are no edits, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes. Do I hear a motion?
So moved. Commissioner Samuzi.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that, Commissioners, um, sorry, Vice Chair Saudi.
Excellent. Thank you. Are there any discussions? All right, let's move to the roll call. Leslie, would you like to take the roll?
Yes, Commissioner Harris is absent. Commissioner Higman is absent. Commissioner Mercado. Commissioner Samuzi.
Yes.
Um, Commissioner Shock?
Absent.
Said yes.
Yes, yes, sorry.
Vice Chair Saudi?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
And Chair Pravat Ali.
Yes. Thank you very much. All right, well, now move on to the public hearings. The item on our agenda tonight is an update on the sites inventory of the twenty twenty three to twenty thirty one housing element. There will be a presentation and public comment, but no commission vote is required. We have the staff report.
Hi, good evening, Chair and Commissioners. Good to see you. I'm allowed to lead you to see the Community Development Director. Tonight, we have Liz Darby as well, who is our, oh, man, she just mentioned what her title was. So she is working with the City Manager's Office, helping with outreach and equity. And we also have Alexis Kaptedian, who is our housing analyst, who will, the three of us will be providing you with a presentation. I wanted to start out with just kind of giving an introduction, and then I'll hand it over to Liz. As you know, we've been on, in the process of updating our housing element. This cycle has been, um, a little bit, felt a little bit different because we are, as you know, in a housing crisis. In order to help us get through this housing crisis, the State Department of Housing and Community Development has assigned our region fourteen thousand two hundred and ten units for the city of San Rafael. What that means is that we have been allocated three thousand two hundred and twenty units. It's a significant jump from prior, from the prior cycle where we had a thousand and seven units assigned to us. So that's the difficult news. The good news is that for San Rafael, the housing element selection of sites has been simply an exercise of identifying sites that have already been zoned to accommodate residential development. So it's a little bit easier in that way. That is the case for the county. It isn't the case for many of the cities in the county. They are having to identify sites and amend their general planned land use maps and rezone in some cases. And so it's, you know, it's different for us. We actually have the majority of our lots within the city are zoned for resi, to accommodate residential development, except for the light industrial, industrial uses or land use designations for obvious reasons. So as Liz and Alexis and I share this presentation and share the sites that we have selected, I just, I'm hopeful that you keep that in mind, that these are sites that are already zoned to accommodate residential. These aren't new sites that we're identifying as possible residential sites. These are already sites that can be developed and an application could be submitted for residential development. In fact, we have had some residential applications and pre-applications for some of these sites, so. I, I, we are having to point out these sites because HCD is having us, is making us prove that we have enough sites to accommodate the three thousand two hundred and twenty units. And also, we want to make sure that we do this in a meaningful way, that we're not contributing to past patterns of segregation and that we are accommodating housing that can accom, that can accommodate affordable housing development. So, and we're happy to do that because, as I said, we're in a housing crisis and unique housing. So with that, I will let Liz pick off this meeting. I'll go ahead and start sharing, Liz.
Thank you, Ally, and good evening, everybody. Thank you so much for allowing us to be here tonight. A lot of you are aware of the housing element, but we're going to provide a short overview of what the housing element is, why we're doing this, and then we're going to go over the sites in San Rafael where new housing could be built in the future. Next slide. So let's start with the basics. What is the housing element? In a nutshell, it's our guide to meeting local future housing needs. The housing element is part of the city's general plan and has to be updated every eight years. It also requires each city and county to demonstrate that they are accommodating what's called their fair share of the region's housing needs. It's also the only part of the general plan that's subject to approval and certification by the state. So when we finish our plan, we have to submit it to the California Department of Housing and Community Development, or HCD, for certification, which means there are very detailed state requirements for what we need to have included. And in this cycle, the requirements have been expanded significantly. Next slide. One of the main differences this cycle is that the city is required to, as we say, affirmatively further their housing. That means the city is required to address significant disparities in housing needs and in access to opportunities for certain populations and for certain communities. In general, it's the city's approach to planning housing through an equity law. Specifically, that means we must identify those disparities in housing and access in community resources. We must replace segregated living patterns with truly integrated and balanced living patterns. We need to transform racially and ethnically concentrated areas of poverty into areas of opportunity. We must foster and maintain compliance with civil rights and fair housing laws. Fair housing laws are civil rights laws. And we need to provide housing opportunities at all income levels and in all areas of the city while increasing the opportunity for community assets in areas where they are heavily under-resourced. Next slide. And as part of the county's equity approach, it's important that we conduct a robust community engagement effort and that we include residents and communities who have historically not participated in housing conversations, but who are often directly affected by the policies and programs that are a result of those decisions. City staff has created a working group that is comprised of a very diverse group of residents who represent specific populations, who are helping the city develop and inform the policies and programs that are from the group of the fair housing. Staff is also engaging community groups and community-based organizations to better inform the future of housing and equity here in San Rafael. Next slide. So how much housing are we planning for? As Ally pointed out, here's how it works. State of California determines the number of housing units that are needed to be built in each region of the state in order to meet the expected housing needs over the next eight years. In the Bay Area, that number was four hundred and forty one thousand one hundred and seventy six units. It's set up to the Regional Council of Governments, in our case, it's ABAG, the Association of Bay Area Governments, that assigns those units to each city and county. ABAG assigned thirteen thousand five hundred and seventy two units, or about three percent of the total for, for the whole Bay Area, to Marin County. And less than one percent of that number was assigned to San Rafael, which is how we come up with the number of three thousand two hundred and twenty units. The units were allocated based on factors including population, employment, transit, and a formula that assigned more units to what we call high resource areas. These are areas that have great schools, higher incomes, good jobs, and other features that support economic success. And this process of determining each city's share is called the RENA, or the Regional Housing Needs Allocation. Next slide. And this, and the city's task, our task, is to identify the specific sites in the city that can accommodate those three thousand twenty, three thousand two hundred and twenty units of housing. We must show the income groups that each site can realistically support. All of our lower income sites have to be zoned for at least thirty units per acre of land, which basically means multifamily housing. The sites have to be at least on a half an acre. There are specific rules that apply to any sites that we already counted in our last housing element eight years ago. We can count ADUs, but have to be realistic about how many might be built. And we can count projects that are already approved but not yet built. We can count non-vacant sites, provided we have substantial evidence that they realistically be developed. And we have to have a realistic approach to all of the capacity. Can't just assume that every property is going to develop with the absolute maximum allowed size. And finally, we need to provide a buffer for extra sites in some, in case some of the sites that we identified become unavailable over the next eight-year period. At this time, I am going to turn it over to my colleague, Alexis Kaptedian.
Thank you, Liz. So in addition to state guidelines, San Rafael has a set of guiding principles that are laid out in the city's General Plan twenty forty. These principles, which inform the city's process of identifying the housing sites, include, for example, creating a more equitable and inclusive community, conserving open space, focusing growth around transit and downtown, and maintaining a strong local economy. Next slide, please. The good news is San Rafael can accommodate its share of units without making major changes to its zoning and general plan or developing in open spaces. The city is almost seventeen square miles, and it has a significant amount of vacant and underutilized land that can be repurposed. So we need to accommodate three thousand two hundred and twenty units, as Liz mentioned, and we've identified the capacity for about five thousand units of housing. We'll need a buffer of fifteen to thirty percent, and so we'll continue to receive input from community members, your planning commission, the city council, and our working group to reduce the number of sites on the list. Next site, next slide, please. So there are some challenges to achieving San Rafael's RENA number. Some of our sites have constraints, such as existing uses, small size, and/or multiple owners. The cost of land and construction is high right now. And a lot of the need that's been assigned to us is for affordable housing. And building this type of housing depends on various state and federal funding sources that are in short supply. There are parts of the city where it's difficult to build housing that's affordable due to conditions like slope, flooding, or fire danger. We have infrastructure constraints like water supply and limited public transit. And finally, we, we have a lot of already approved development, and only a small percentage of that is earmarked for lower-income households. Next slide, please. So in the next few slides, Ally and I are going to walk you through the kind of sites that appear in the inventory. We've broken down the inventory into six categories. And the first category are projects that are already approved. So these are projects that are fully entitled, and they've already received the approvals that they need for construction. So we're expecting all of these projects to be built by twenty thirty one. And together, these projects represent almost eight hundred housing units. They include projects like the new sixty-seven unit affordable housing development for older adults on Third Street, at nine 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 Third Street in downtown San Rafael, and the one hundred and ninety-two unit Los Ramos apartments that were approved earlier this year. Once these projects are built, they'll meet thirty-one percent of the city's moderate and above moderate income need and about fifteen percent of the lower income need. Next slide, please. Next, we have proposed projects. So these are projects that are still in the planning stage. They haven't been approved yet, but the developer has submitted an application that's now under consideration. And these projects represent another thirteen hundred housing units. The biggest of these projects is at Northgate Mall, which is proposed for redevelopment in several phases. The first of these phases includes nine hundred and seven units, and it's scheduled to be finished by the end of the eight-year planning period in twenty thirty one. It includes ninety-six affordable units and over eight hundred market rate units. So between the approved projects and the proposed projects, we're already up to about twenty-one units of our three thousand two hundred and twenty unit assignment. So about two-thirds of the way there. But most of the housing that's approved or proposed is market rate housing for above moderate income households. So these projects will bring us to ninety-four percent of our moderate and above moderate income need, but only twenty-four percent of our lower income need. I'll invite Ally now to take us through some of the other categories.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, so we've identified sixty, so I'm going to start with the median, low and medium density housing sites. We've identified sixty sites that are zoned for low and medium density. This accounts for about two hundred and fifty units. These are smaller lots. They're zoned for one or two single-family homes. Many of these lots are smaller and steep slopes, may have limited access. Because these lots are zoned between six and twenty-four units per acre, they aren't big enough to accommodate affordable housing in a meaningful way, as Liz and Alexis both mentioned. An affordable housing site, you know, goods, uh, site that can, that can, you know, accommodate a solid affordable housing development really needs to be at a density of thirty units per acre. This is an example of a low and medium density, this actually is a medium density site. This is on Windward Way. Um, this is a vacant site, just to give you an example of what the low and medium density sites might look like. So going into the high-density residential, these are sites that are zoned to accommodate more than thirty units per acre. And this is a similar density to the eighty-eight Vivian Way site. Then this is a site that was recently came through your planning commission, Vivian Way, that was included, I believe, seventy, seventy-one units. That site was actually proposed at a density of twenty-nine units per acre, so pretty similar to what is needed to be able to accommodate a healthy, affordable housing site. Our consultant has identified twenty sites in this category. This would account for five hundred units of housing. And many of these sites are not vacant, so that's the downside. But they are zoned to accommodate the, the higher densities. These are sites that could, that are in some ways underutilized. This, these two are examples, two motel projects on Lincoln Avenue. They could potentially be redeveloped as high-density housing sites. So moving, shifting over to the commercially zoned property, you heard me say this earlier. Our land use designation accommodates residential development for all of our land uses. So that includes commercially zoned properties. We have twenty-nine sites that have been identified on commercially zoned properties that has the capacity to accommodate a one thousand one hundred and thirty-seven units. So this is an example of one of those sites. This is at, located at, um, Har, this is the Harper Shopping Center, this is at five 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 East Francisco Boulevard. This is between the Lexus and Subaru dealerships. So this type of site could accommodate high-density residential as well. And then moving on to another site, this is another example, sites that are located near transit. This is, um, three fifty Mary Dale is located, I don't know if you can see my, my arrow, but the forty-five unit townhome was recently approved and went through, um, went through an extension recently with your planning commission. But just north of that is a storage unit, and then just north of that is another facility. The total can accommodate, it looks like a hundred units, um, almost a hundred units. The beauty of this, these two sites is that they're located near transit, um, close enough to Northgate that, you know, they're available or near, within walking distance to servicing as well. And just a few more examples. Thirty Smith Ranch Road. Nine hundred Los Galinas, that's the site behind Safeway in North San Rafael. And then eighty-five Woodland is in the Bret Hart area, so a variety of locations. And then, just shifting over to the downtown site, we, I, uh, we described this one separately because of And then just shifting over to the downtown site, we, I, we described this one separately because of, it's kind of unique, it's a commercially zoned site. The entire area is commercially zoned, but we just went through the downtown precise plan specifically for the purpose of looking for ways to make residential development easier. The downtown precise plan has, you know, it's kind of a unique zoning in that residential is allowed in all of the districts. There is no density cap, there's an easier process for review. And we have identified a total of fifty sites in this area, which has a potential for accommodating fifteen hundred units. So, show you some examples of what those sites might look like. On the left side of the screen, that's the parking lot near, near Soul Food. And then on the right side, eighteen twenty six fourth is a, that's the nursery over in West End area.
I think it's the Ace, is that the Ace Hardware with the nursery?
Oh, you're right, you're right, that is the Ace Hardware, yes. And then another example, oh, that was, those were the two examples from the downtown. So, you know, I mentioned before that there are a number of sites that were, that are zoned to accommodate residential. And there was a specific process that our consultant went through at eliminating sites that we weren't going to bring forward as potential opportunity sites. The sites that are zoned industrial, we obviously, for obvious reasons, we're not bringing those forward. They don't accommodate residential currently. They're not appropriate and compatible for residential use. Many of those are manufacturing type uses, so they're, you know, auto dealerships or auto repair shops. So they're not, they don't, they're not compatible with each other. So we didn't bring forward any of those sites. Active big box shopping centers that are actively being used, except for Northgate because we have an active application for that. But like Marin Square, for example, just went through a redevelopment. We're not bringing that forward, we don't anticipate that we're going to see residential development in the next eight years on this, on that site. Large auto dealerships weren't provided as opportunity sites. Those are kind of a, you know, they're a protected site, they bring, they're important to the city for economic purposes. Class A office buildings were not brought forward. Sites with high improvement values, as I mentioned, Marin Square was not brought forward. Sites that could displace residents, we are really being held accountable to that by the state as well. We don't want to displace residents. Sites that would require general plan amendments. We have plenty of sites within the city that can accommodate residential, so there's no need to go into a location that would require a general plan amendment to accommodate residential because there's, we have sites, so. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and pass it back to Alexis.
Thanks Ally. Accessory dwelling units or ADUs also have a role to play in meeting the city's housing goals. So these include in-law units, garage apartments, backyard cottages and other small rental units. And new state laws make it much easier to build ADUs and the city strongly supports ADUs as a way to meet rental housing needs. They're also relatively affordable because they cost a lot less to build than conventional multifamily apartments. And so we projected that San Rafael will produce two hundred ADUs over the next eight years or about twenty five per year. This is based on a slight uptick over the last four years when San Rafael averaged about twenty ADUs per year. And based on rent data, we're estimating that about thirty five percent of these units will be affordable to lower income households with the rest affordable to moderate and above moderate incomes. This gives us an additional buffer on top of our housing sites. Next slide please. So when we look at all one hundred and eighty of our housing sites together, we've identified the potential for about fifty four hundred housing units. That includes twenty one hundred units that are approved or proposed, plus another thirty two hundred units on sites that are vacant or underused and zoned to allow high density residential uses. If you look at the brown row in this table, you'll see we have the capacity for over seventeen hundred lower income units, seven hundred moderate income units and nearly three thousand above moderate income units, including sixteen hundred already in the pipeline. So we find ourselves in a better position than many of the other cities in Marin County. And we have quite a bit of capacity without needing to rezone property. That said, we do need to make sure our housing opportunities are distributed across the city as part of creating a more equitable and inclusive community and meeting affirmatively furthering fair housing requirements. Next slide please. The maps showing where our housing sites are located, as well as the detailed data for each site are available on our website at sanrafilhousing.org. Each map shows a different area of the city, including North San Rafael, mid San Rafael, the San Pedro Peninsula, central San Rafael and downtown. So we're not going to walk through all the maps today, but here's the North San Rafael map as an example. The colors on this map indicate the general plan designation. So the brown sites are high density residential, the red sites are commercial, the blue sites are offices and the beige and yellow sites are lower density residential. Again, all the maps are available for review on our webpage at sanrafilhousing.org. And as part of the fair housing analysis, the city is working with consultants to overlay the housing sites on other maps showing patterns of segregation, poor housing condition, access to resources. And once finalized, these maps will also be posted on the webpage. Next slide please. So we encourage the community to engage with the housing element update. For those listening in tonight, please join us as we present the sites inventory to city council on August first for a virtual community meeting on August sixteenth. And you can always check out the website, sanrafilhousing.org to see upcoming events, listen to meeting recordings, subscribe to updates and leave us feedback through the survey or comment box. With that, we'll conclude. Thank you so much for your time and we're available now for questions and comments.
Alright, great, thank you very much. We will open it up to questions from the commission. Do any commissioners have questions of staff? If so, please raise your hand, go ahead. Vice Chair Sadi.
First, I want to start by thanking you guys for preparing the comprehensive report. I had a couple of questions. One is, with the, with the really fast paced cost and construction and, and like even just housing costs over the last year or two. How are we keeping our numbers current in terms of affordability? When we determine, you know, like basically the cost per units and also like the income level required to be able to live in those units? And then my other question was, how, is there any metric around like the probability that some of these sites will be used? Because I could, I could guess that like the Ace Hardware will likely not be torn down to provide housing. But I could see a bunch of other sites, you know, being more probable. So, are you guys looking, are you guys continuing to look at that? And again, it's been.
Yeah, I can start with, so I'll starting with your first question. Yes, there's been quite a bit of change over the past couple of years. We rely on numbers provided by HUD on what constitutes affordable housing at different levels, different income levels. So we use that number and that gets updated annually. And so it's the, it's the document that we are able to rely on. In terms of what, which site is actually going to be developed? It's really difficult to kind of gauge that. We had, for example, I think in the past cycle, Liz or Alexis, let me know if I'm misstating this, but I think it's only a couple of sites that we had identified as opportunity sites were actually developed. The rest were not. And, but yet we had a number of housing units proposed on other sites. So trying to figure out like which one is going to come forward and actually get developed is kind of a tricky task. But we have heard in, as part of the working group, we have, you know, an affordable housing developer that identified some reasons. And so we're, you know, luckily, we're already looking at sites that are in high resource areas. The reason that's important to the affordable housing developers is that they have the ability to get, be more competitive for funding if they're in areas that are high resource areas. So we are, you know, we're looking at data, we're trying to, we're talking to affordable housing developers, market housing developers and finding opportunities where we think there may be some interest in developing in the future. Just as an example, we have sites in the downtown that we've already received pre-applications for and expect to receive applications for in the future. Those sites we feel more comfortable with, the Northgate site obviously we feel really comfortable with. But, you know, there are sites that, you know, we don't know, we're identifying those because they're in locations that will, that could benefit from housing specifically for affordable housing. But yeah, that's, that's, it's, it's an ongoing process for us.
Yeah, and are the HUD numbers, just to follow up, are the HUD numbers, like how granular? I mean, I'm guessing they don't get that granular, but like, obviously, if we take Northern California, that's going to be, you know, like how do they really break up the regions and determine affordability?
Alexis or Liz, do you, either of you know how granular HUD gets?
So I think one of the challenges that it's, is that it's based on the county. And so I think one of the things that's been brought up in our working group as well is that Marin, there are other jurisdictions in Marin County that are pulling up the median income compared to what it would be if we were looking at just San Rafael. But, but to answer your question, it is county, a county calculation.
Okay, great.
It is, and it's updated every year. So for example, the year of a family size and income, and so for family quarters, we always maintain Marin County. I think this year we're up to about a hundred thousand dollars a year in annual income. Allows you to qualify for Section eighty. And that's an affordable housing, and that just, again, is what's like your original point, which is as housing prices keep going up and up, how are we possibly going to keep pace with the cost of housing?
Yeah, absolutely, thank you guys.
Mr. Shaw, go ahead.
Thank you, I, I have two questions. One is if you could just elaborate more on what realistic housing capacity means. And then my second question is around the ADUs. So you mentioned that it's estimated twenty five a year would be created. I'm curious if, if it's also accounted for that certain folks may build ADUs but may not rent, may not actively rent those ADUs out. So that's just something I was curious about as well.
I can, I can start and then do you, either of you want to fill in whatever I've left out? So realistic capacity versus actual density. So we have our sites, just taking a site that's zoned thirty units per acre. So that acre needs to account for parking, it needs to account for access, it needs to account for open, you know, active use areas. And, you know, when you get down to like where there's, you have the, and, and you may have situations where you may have like slopes or, you know, sensitive conservation areas. So when you look, account for all of those things, that realistic capacity is a little bit less in some cases, and so you don't actually get thirty units per acre, you may get less than that.
Thank you.
And then for the ADUs, yeah, that's a, that's a good question to answer your question about whether we can't guarantee that those are going to be rented. It, we don't, you know, we used to have a, yeah, I, I don't know how to, that's a, that's a challenging question.
I just, I'm curious, yeah, just with the whole work from home, you know, a lot of folks work from home and I could see potentially, you know, families building those and using them themselves versus renting them out. And so I just think it's something to, to be mindful of in, in accounting for what that's going to actually contribute to affordable housing.
And we've talked about that, just internally, like how, what could we do to assure that these units are rented? And how, you know, yeah, so there, that, it's a challenge. We'll have to kind of work through, you know, what requirements we could potentially include in future, future applications.
Yeah, I just add one thing, I was just going to say, one of the strategies that, you know, one we could think about is kind of differently. How do we incentivize people to do it, right? Because it's a lot of placing. So maybe something that we should consider is like, maybe we can give a discount or we can give a cost write off, right? For those who guarantee sign an agreement that say that for the next two to five years, this will only be rented to somebody who fills one of these categories. I mean, that's one way to address it, otherwise you're always kind of policing somebody's private property with somebody's.
Yeah, and I also think to Commissioner Shaw's point, like, I think the people in San Rafael that can actually afford to build these units are the people who are working remotely and probably want to use them as, as, you know, their own. I think the other thing though is, like I know personally for me, we moved my mom up here a few years ago, but I think eventually, you know, we, we've considered like building an ADU to help, to have her be able to live with us and still have privacy and us have privacy. So like, I guess, without being rented, it's still being used as a housing unit. And like, how does the city even like, I guess, how do you even know that? I guess.
Um, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, I, I was, sorry, Commissioner Sadi, I, we, my family has the same plans for, for my mom eventually. So it won't be rented, but there will be somebody living in it. And so that's, that's, yeah, I think a great example. Apologies, I didn't mean to interrupt there.
No, no worries, I just wanted to add in, you know, one of the pieces, the, the resources we have is that the Association of Barrier Governments or ABAG did perform a study of ADUs to help inform what's realistic in terms of affordability across the Bay Area. And so in that report, they looked at ADU use. And so they do break down for different areas of the Bay Area. So for North Bay, this is saying that there's, you know, based on their work, they saw sixteen percent of ADUs occupied by family members who did not pay rent. And then another thirteen percent were a family friend who was renting, renting the ADU. And so I think that can also kind of inform some of our projections.
And if I could just add a final thing, you know, that is senior housing, let's be honest, right? And it is affordable and it, no, but I mean, that's a huge, broad, vast population, right? We are realizing are ones that are really caught. Some of them may have homes that they own, but they can't afford to rent them or stay in them. So that is something, and again, how do we incentivize that because it does help the community? And without making people feel guilty that they're taking care of their families, because, but that is, that's, that's, that's a good thing.
And one of the things that we have heard just in reaching out to stakeholders is, you know, this idea of intergenerational housing and this just is, you know, kind of potentially one form of providing that opportunity. So, and it's housing, you know, it's, sometimes you're going to have a situation where you're not charging rent. So that's where it gets tricky, like, do we require rent when, when it's a better situation not having to require rent for family members, right?
Just thinking more broadly about the, about the limitations that the city has around incentives. Because I know that incentives were brought up, you know, very specifically with regards to ADUs. But I think just like across the board, I'm really interested in, in what could the city do just in general? One of the things that I'm a big fan of, just in general, is, is, is the use of incentives as opposed to like penalties to try to drive behaviors. And one thing that, I know this is specific to housing, but, you know, these aren't siloed. these aren't silos, like housing impacts, employment impacts other things. And one conversation that is brewing among particularly the startup community that's been developing here is what kinds of incentives can the city offer to help encourage local businesses? Particularly like non-minimum wage paying brick and mortar type businesses, but businesses that are, that are paying more than just like quote-unquote living wage. But, you know, paying enough that someone could actually participate in the house buying market without having to be subsidized to be able to afford the housing, right? What are, what are some of the incentives that the city could do to encourage or support such businesses to actually have physical locations here in San Rafael? Reason why that's related is that, you know, you've earmarked a number of different areas of the city that could do for high-density housing. I think it'd be interesting to overlay that with, what are the opportunities to also support businesses in some of those same areas with an eye for the impact on VMT for some of these new projects? So I know that that's going to be, you know, just to get ahead of the issue, because you know that that's going to be a big issue. Not so much for projects in the canal, but certainly for projects in some of these other neighborhoods where it's already going to be a battle to get any kind of density in those places. And then you also have this issue, there's a very real issue of, the road infrastructure is not really built for density beyond a certain amount, so we, we, the land use allows for that. So what, what are, what are we doing to help direct and manage traffic in a way that's not trying to micromanage behaviors of people, if that makes sense?
I'm happy to take part of that because it was pretty dense, if you will. So there's a couple of things that you raised, right? And one is how do we incentivize all kinds of things? And one of the things that I think you placed is economic development. And that's all about the affirmative for the rent for our housing, right? What if, what could we do? We could incentivize entrepreneurialship, let's say, in our under-resourced neighborhoods, right? Or with our under, or underserved populations, let's say, do something like that. One of the things that came up, and I don't want to go too long on this, is while we were watching Fourth Street during COVID, have a lot of empty houses, a lot of the conversations that we were having is, how do we incentivize, you know, people to, to utilize empty vacant storefronts, right? With people who need opportunities for economic development? It'd be great if those, or parts of those buildings to create new businesses that would support our existing residents in our underserved communities. But there's some ways that we can talk about that from a economic development perspective. From a housing perspective, I think, and Ali, you please weigh in on this. We've heard from the business community and others that, and we probably all know it just by going into our grocery stores, right? We are having a shortage of workers, full stop, right? We can't get people to work here. I have people that I've been working with in my grocery stores commuting an hour and a half still every day and they have young children and that's just not sustainable. All right, so what can we do about workforce housing? Whether it's entrepreneurialship that kind of invests in existing communities or that we can do to ensure that people who live and work in our communities can walk to their places of employment, right, to address all of the other factors that you raised? And I think those are all of the kinds of programs and policies that all of us are grappling with when it comes to really both addressing the disparities in neighborhoods and communities, right? And uplifting and creating opportunities of economic development for everybody kind of women while trying to be creative and as you say, be kind of forward-thinking and futuristic about our housing, right? Are we, should we be building big single-family, you know, that kind of thing as opposed to building more high-density housing closer to where people are in the downtown area? And those are all the kind of strategies that I think we can utilize to help incentivize all residents to be part of the process.
Well, so beyond the hypothetical, because I guess, apologize for the density of the question. The root of the question is, what ability does the city actually have to create such incentives? Like, is it, you know, is it strictly on like reduction of permitting fees? Or are there tax-based incentives? Like what is sort of the, the full armory that's, that the city has at its disposal? Understanding that there are going to be financial impacts to city revenue with, you know, different types of programs?
So are you speaking specifically related to businesses, not, not?
I think, I think just more broadly, it doesn't have to be specific to businesses.
This may be something we come back to you on, you know, we, we have an economic development department that does focus on trying to find solutions specifically for small businesses. We, during the pandemic, we had some recovery money that we were able to distribute and I, I apologize for not being more, more educated in this to be able to respond to your question adequately. But yeah, I mean, you bring up a good point, these are all connected things. We, we recognize that housing and, and, you know, being able to hire people and being able to have jobs within proximity to where you live, those are all connected things. But yeah, I, I'll have to come back to you with what, what we're doing, what we've done in the past and what we can do in the future for businesses, local businesses, specifically smaller startups. Be happy to do that.
Although, I saw you came off mute, do you have a comment?
Yeah, mine's not as dense as Commissioner Samutti's, I, I don't get to that level, so just wanted to highlight that. I'm still trying to absorb what he was commenting on.
I got it.
Yeah, yeah, that was, I was always so impressed, man. Because I was thinking of the concession idea as well, I thought that's really interesting. I guess a couple of thoughts I had taking away this.
Could I interrupt one second? Apologize, if we could keep this to questions, because we still need to open the public hearing. Not that I want to cut this amazing conversation short, but I just want to make sure that we, so if you're moving forward with a question, please continue and I apologize for interrupting.
A little bit, yeah, a little bit.
Okay.
And I think a couple of things that jumped out at me is, what, what's the purpose of the, sort of the, the report? What is it, ABAG that's requiring this or HCD? I guess I didn't really understand, the data compilation is one part, is there a funding component on the backend? Is there like a, does this, in, in other words, we're doing this in response to HCD's request, but I guess I didn't really absorb, why is this something we have to do? It seems like a lot of resources, it's a really impressive presentation. But I'm not connecting the dots on where this aspirational number is versus why we're doing it.
Yeah, so I think, you know, unfortunately in others, not within the county, but there are cities in the state where the number has just been a number that they have to identify and, you know, you kind of go through cycles and nothing really happens. And so HCD is really kind of ramped up, they want numbers and they want, they're going to hold us accountable. And so going through this exercise has always been meaningful for us, but it's even more meaningful now as we continue to see prices skyrocket and, you know, people looking for affordable housing, you know, employees having to commute longer distances because they can't afford to locate here, you know, folks doubling up on apartments because they're needing to, you know, share, share units. So there's a lot that's going into for us, this process, because, you know, we, we know we need to do it. It's important, HCD is making us do it, but we have to do it. It's, we're in a housing crisis, you heard me say that at the beginning, it's, it's, it's very real. You know, we are, we've had to do a housing element every eight years for the past, I want to say, at least a couple of decades, a few decades, more than that. So we continue to do that. What HCD will be doing, just kind of by reading some of the legislation, is if we're not, you know, we'll identify all of these sites, we're going to have to identify policies and programs that go along with that. If we're not progressing in our numbers within, you know, midway, we may be required to open up our housing element again and think about other ways to encourage development of housing. So it's, it's an important task for us, you kind of asked, you know, how do we know this is, these sites are going to be developed? Well, we don't, but we're really looking at sites that we feel will be developed because we're being, we're going to be held accountable. And we don't develop, we're doing as much as we can, oh, sorry.
Oh, no, that really helps, I was trying to figure out if there was something on the backend. So that really, and that was my other question too, was, housing is, as Commissioner Samutti highlighted, just there's so many webs to it, but there's sort of this component of policies with housing sites. So thank you for highlighting new webs, that was my other question too. So that's it, those are my two questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Mercado. Do we have any more questions from the commissioners?
I have a question, I know I've asked a lot, but I have one more question. So, you know, one of the things that was emphasized in this presentation and I think is a discussion, you know, almost every meeting that we have, or I'd like it to be a discussion, is around equity and really being able to, like, bring up the areas in our, in our city that are underutilized. And, and by bring up, I mean, that's probably bad words, you know, not a very good descriptor, but like, there's an economic development portion, but I, I think as Commissioner Samutti said, it's all hand in hand. So if we're looking at like, all the different factors that may allow us to develop, develop areas like the canal and bring it vitality, keep it affordable, provide housing that, you know, people can actually live in at the right densities, like per unit. I, I guess, as optimistic as I am, I'm seeing all the pressures that we have in just getting the units. And how do we keep, you know, the importance of equity and civil rights and, you know, access to housing in the forefront when, when it's hard to just get like, even like above-market rate housing built?
Let's take that one, we have to make it a priority, I mean, that's full stop, that's what it is, right? We have to prioritize it and kind of got to put our money where our mouth is, a lot of this is economic. The other thing is, there's a lot of ways to look around about equity, right? And we can talk about equity in terms of populations or an area of our communities or the canal, or we can talk about that as well. But we can also start looking at sort of our mortgage data and recognizing that there are, there are people of color, women and women of color in San Rafael who are paying very high market rate rents, who could actually afford a house and build equity within their own and, you know, make their generational wealth available to their children. That's a gap, that's an equity gap too. And we should be looking at our HAMD data and recognizing, are there policies and practices and programs that we should start thinking about in the city of San Rafael that help people get first-time home, you know, down payments? Or should we be helping people who have to move for whatever reasons and can grow within San Rafael? The opportunity to have, and I don't know if anybody's more renty, you know this, but, you know, if you, if you rent, you have to have a deposit, sometimes two months. You don't get that rental deposit back until you've found your next house and then to put down another two-month rent, right? And so maybe there's something that we can do in, in terms of policies and programs that can help address those kinds of things. So when we look at equity, I kind of highlighted populations, economic development and that kind of thing. There's all kinds of equity, we can talk about the fact, and I always mention this, right? There are more African-Americans living in the city of San Rafael than there are living in more in the city, right? I mean, just as a number, not as a percentage, and I always bring this up because one of the things we want to do around equity is to ensure that people feel welcome in San Rafael, right? And if there are gaps, what are those gaps? And what can the city do from a policy program perspective to make our city more welcoming? City is more welcoming and it's not just that, right? But we also have different populations in the city that also need to have their issues addressed frankly, in their own language, right? And recognizing that we need to make our communications at a city level and certainly about housing, you know, much more available to people. And when it comes to things like Section eight vouchers and affordable housing properties, right? Who's actually getting, who's even aware of them? So there are a lot of different equity questions that definitely still come back to, I have to agree. Finances and money and the fact that it's ridiculously expensive to build these kinds of things and trying to make it. But there are other ways to address equity as well, I think, I, I, I think the city wants to prioritize all of those. Correct me if I'm wrong, Ali.
Yeah, no, I, I, that's great, I, I just wanted to add, you know, something that we've talked about in the, in some of the working group meetings is, you know, there's, you know, we are, there's so much to do, there's a lot of work to do. We have a number of policy documents that came forward to you in prior, I think, three to four years where we've made modifications to our zoning code to try to encourage development. All of those, you know, we continue to look at ways to remove barriers to housing. One of the things that, you know, our prior director says, used to say, and, you know, we used to have these conversations, like, how are we going to do this, like, we don't build housing, the city doesn't build housing. You know, we, developers build housing, we, we identify sites and we've got so many sites within the city, like, why isn't it happening? And we have reached out to developers, they've identified, you know, certain difficulties that they feel would, you know, if we remove those things from their, their path, that it would make life easier and they would be able to develop. And we've made some efforts in the past, you know, few years. This, this exercise that we're going through, this housing element, it's, you know, it's very labor-intensive, you're right, Commissioner Mercado. But it's necessary so that we can really set the path for the next eight years and really think about what else can we do? We're identifying sites, we're coming up with policies and programs and that will create an opportunity to kind of dig into other policy documents that we could bring forward. So I'm hoping with the two of us that we've responded to your question, Vice Chair Savi.
Yeah, thank you, yeah, I, I think, you know, there's another end to it, which is like, keep, the city has more agency in keeping people in their housing than it probably does building housing, right? And so I know that's not on topic, but I, I thank you for your answers.
Thank you, I, I have one related question and that is, I guess it's mostly for Ali or Alexis or both. Is there any way that we could get more multi-unit, family, below-market rate condos in the single-family home? The traditionally white, majority-white, single-family home neighborhoods, so we could integrate those neighborhoods better? Love to see that.
I can start and Alexis, if you want to add anything, you know, one of the things that I mentioned earlier is that the key to a solid affordable housing development is density. And we're talking about thirty-plus units per acre. And, you know, just in going through the exercise of identifying sites within the low-density to mid-density residential land use classifications, there aren't a lot of large sites. And where we have high-density residential, you know, we have the ability to, we, meaning, you know, we, in general, have the ability to, to allow for more, more housing and an opportunity for affordable housing. So the thing that we are doing, you know, we have released some affordable housing money for a few projects this, these past, I think in March, we released two-point-five million. And that, you know, will allow for development of additional units. And so yes, I hear what you're saying, I think in the SB nine legislation that may inspire some additional units in residential, let's, you know, we'll, we'll see what that, what transpires from that. But yeah, good question, thank you.
Yeah.
Alexis, I don't know if there's anything you want to add to that?
I just, I appreciate the question, Chair Privatoli, I think we, we've talked about that balance between like wanting to find opportunities to build in those areas and then also thinking about making sure that there's the amenities and services needed, there's access to public transit, and so that, I think that's been a balance and a challenge. But I, I, I do appreciate you raising that because I think it's really important.
Yeah. Have you guys talked to the schools, the school districts, they have so much land out in the single-family home neighborhoods?
Yes, I think there are a couple of sites that we've identified as possible housing sites.
Well, thank you, are there any more questions from the commission? If not, I'll, I'll open it up to public comments.
Just one. What level of involvement would the city potentially have in actual purchase of land or property?
That's a good question. We have talked about it very briefly. You know, you would really need to have somebody on staff that has the expertise to be able to manage a site. That's definitely a, a skill that is needed. And, you know, we, you know, we find that our solutions have been to provide funding for someone with the expertise, that affordable housing developer is, you know, very valuable. So, you know, it's something that we talked about. It's not off the table, but, you know, it would require somebody with, definitely with expertise in that area.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay, with that, I will open it up to public comments. Leslie, would you get on?
Yes, thank you. If you wish to comment on this, you will have three minutes. Please use the raise the hand icon at the bottom of the screen. Or if you're phoning in, use the star nine, dial star nine. Mon Carpenter's thirty-five. Nope, no one wishes to speak.
Okay. Great. Well, at this point, I will close the public hearing and then call on commissioners to provide any sort of additional comments or deliberation, noting that we've already had quite a discussion, I would say. But I will, I will, I'll just do a round robin here. That's what we typically do, starting with Vice Chair Saudi.
Oh, wow. I was going to hope to get ideas from everybody.
Okay, we can, well, I can, let's start with.
No, I'm always, I'm always up for talking. I'll go ahead.
Okay. You were just the first person on the left of.
Oh, yeah, I know. Well, I, I really appreciate the dedication and the energy, like, not only Alexis and Liz and Ally, and I know there's a host of other people, and there's, there's definitely the community outreach. I've seen all the, I, I get the communications for it, so it's, I'm definitely seeing it out there. I mean, I, I know this is an uphill battle, and let's see, you know, hopefully we, we can be in a place where we can make, continue to keep San Rafael a place of, you know, more economic diversity than other places that we're in. Hopefully we see more of that. And I'd like to see it be a place where we encourage more, you know, diversity of, of the population, not just ethnicity, but, you know, we have a lot of elderly people. We have to house them. We have to get creative about that. And I, I just hope that, you know, with the challenges that we face right now, that we'll come out on the other side and, and be able to, you know, be able to get closer to hitting the numbers. I know they're just like, you know, they are just like a breakdown. I know they're not arbitrary, but they are like, you know, in San Rafael, you know, how we get that, those three thousand two hundred and twenty units, whatever is, is put on us. But like, you know, I, I hope that we, we can, in the next eight years, fulfill the needs of our community and keep people here, keep people staying here.
Agreed. Commissioner Shaw, do you have any comments?
I, I have no, no further comments. I, I echo a lot of what, what's been discussed in this, and I just appreciate all, all the work and, yeah, especially, I think, around incentives, what Commissioner Samutti brought up and Liz, all the work you're doing too. I, I'd love to, to understand more there. Anywho, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Samutti?
Maybe I'll start with a question. So what we're, what we've done here, we're just providing some additional maybe commentary or discussion. What is the, what is the actionable step from the housing element report?
I'm sorry, is your question, once the report is done, what, what is happening or what is the request of you tonight?
Yeah, so after the report is done, I mean, because tonight is, is just discussion. But like, once this report is done, what are the, what are the actionable steps? Is that planning department? Is that city council?
Yeah, so once the report is completed, we will provide opportunity for public comment. And that's about, I think it's a thirty day, and Liz, I'm not sure if that's correct. But then we submit our draft to the State Department of Housing and Community Development, and they need to give us a thumbs up before we can adopt the housing element. And what we are seeing in Southern California, who, Southern California went through this process last year, many of their housing elements in Southern California did not get certified the first round. A lot of them are still not certified. I don't know the exact number, Liz. I don't know if you do. But, you know, once we get a thumbs up from, from HCD, then the next step would be to bring it back through the planning commission and city council for adoption. So there, there will be an opportunity for that final review.
Okay. So, so what I'm thinking about is, is more like, just to tie it back into some of the early discussion, because, you know, I'd hate for this to be just kind of like, not really throwaway commentary. Maybe that's a little bit too dismissive. But, but what I would like to see, and I'm, you know, happy to be involved in any way that needs to happen, is for there to be a broader conversation about, like, what are the set of incentives? Like, given, given that we have our, given that we have our, our general plan, and given that we have this, you know, revised housing element within that general plan, like, there are higher level sort of goals that this is in service of. What are, what are the different incentives that the city could engage in? And/or what are the different, you know, potential grant opportunities that the city might want to go after to be able to get some balance sheet strength to do certain things? And just, you know, I don't know what this looks like, whether it's just like some, some sort of plan, and I don't know where that would sit, but I, I, I would be very, I, I feel as if it would be only a half measure for us to just kind of like pass the plan and like everything gets passed. And it's like, it's now, you know, the part of the general plan, but then now we just kind of sit and wait for the private market to do something. And then like, you know, it's kind of like the underpants gnomes in South Park, where you have that, you know, step one, question mark, and then profit. You know, I want to make sure that we put some time and energy into, like, what are the actual, maybe electronics or circuitry that needs to be put into place to like actually spark the end outcome or vision that we want to see in this revised plan in, in actual reality? So whatever, whatever needs to happen there, you know, I know this is going to come back to the planning commission, but, you know, whatever those other steps are, I just want to make sure that, you know, whoever needs to hear that, like, that's a step we need to take. I want to make sure they do hear that.
Yeah. Chair Privatalli, would it be okay if I responded? I know it's a little bit out of order here. Yeah, so the piece that I missed in, in this, in your question is that we do have a list of policies and programs that will need to be compiled. And they're related to, you know, how we're going to be able to accommodate not only future development, but the protection of housing, existing housing stock. And so that will all be part of that process. And it's not a document that we put aside. We, every year, we are obligated to report out to the Department of Housing and Community Development. And we have, we provide a list, a table that shows the programs that we committed to and identify how we've committed to those, or if we haven't, what we expect to do. So those are going to be something that we'll be reporting out on, on an annual basis. And yeah, I mean, I, I welcome any, any additional comments you may have individually. You know, I'm, I'm always available for that conversation, so feel free to reach out.
Yeah, I would say the one, one last question is, since all of this does rely essentially on developers coming out of the woodworks and saying, okay, hey, let's, let's develop this site now. What are we doing from the standpoint of like relation? I don't know, there may be limitations as to what the city can do, but what can we do or what, you know, what are sort of the things that we are looking at doing to ensure that developers at least are able to see where the opportunities are and what it would take to develop the kind of housing that we want to see?
That's a good question. So we'll have the housing opportunity sites that will be available on our website. We're also, we've been talking to our GIS team about including opportunity sites as a, as a layer in our GIS and making that available and usable by the public. Right now, we have a GIS system that's, you know, our own system that's really, you know, has a lot of information. But then we have the other system that we provide to the public. It's more of a search system and not really, doesn't have a whole lot of information. So what our plan is to kind of filter some of that information in that way. And we do, you know, we, we, developers are part of our community. So we try to maintain a very positive relationship with all of our community members, including our development community. And so we make ourselves, if there's a question about a housing site, you know, we try to provide them with enough information so that they can make that decision. And we, you know, when you say developers coming out of the woodwork, I think we're starting to see a little bit of that. Like, we have, as I mentioned, a number of housing, pre-applications that have been submitted. And so our hope is that we, you know, this is kind of, you know, developers are seeing that we have rezoned the downtown to encourage development, and I think we're being taken seriously, so.
That's great. I mean, they're seeing, if you see stuff like Northgate getting passed after this long time, hopefully people are feeling like, anything can get passed.
Excellent. Good. Commissioner Mercado, comments, questions?
No, not too much. Thank you. Great report. Stepped in the right direction. I'd say the one thing that jumped out at me a little bit was, I didn't pick up much on community engagement and community opposition. I think there needs to be some sort of statement or clarity on that. I know HCD doesn't really care, but in reality, we know how impactful that is. The other, the other idea too is I felt like the downtown was a little bit short, you know, those two sites. I don't know. We have to get super creative if I were looking at this.
Oh, yeah, just, I, I don't know if I, I showed a couple of sites that are, sites that are opportunity sites on our list, but there are, there's more, definitely more. We have quite a number of sites in the downtown. I think we identified about thirteen hundred units. I may be a little bit off there, but it's, it's a large number. And, and that was intentional. We, we went through the process of the, doing, adopting the downtown plan because we had anticipated we would need some, a lot of units.
The downtown mixed-use sites right now are at one thousand five hundred and sixty units.
Yeah, I mean, to me, that's going to be a hard one. If I were HCD, I would push back on that and say downtown, why aren't you going higher? Why aren't you expanding more? Why aren't you converting? Destroy, frontage, all of that. So that was kind of one thing that jumped out. The other one too, that I don't know if it's something that was looked into is sort of assemblage of sites. If we're looking at low-density zoned areas, what about those potential sites that could be collectively merged to build, maybe not higher density, but at least a little bit more things? So you're, you may not have the additional zoning, but if you merge the sites, so I don't know how you would do that. I would look to Commissioner Samutti for the technological magic to do data and figure that out. But it seems like that would be another potential avenue. There's likely common ownership or just what looks like on GIS could be a potential assemblage of sites for development. And the other one is, I don't know if there's much connection sort of in spheres of influence or connections with county or adjacent cities, but those areas, I know many times are greenbelted and kept open. It would be interesting if there's a sort of a balancing or a discussion if HCD thinks it's necessary. Get maybe out of the wheelhouse now, but that could be another area where developers are always potentially interested because it's untapped and likely could be somewhat close to resources. But, no, great job. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Yeah, I'll, I'll just reiterate my desire to see more affordable housing in the single-family home neighborhoods to break the cycle of segregation that's being perpetuated by intergenerational wealth and the cost of housing. So it'd be great to see some below-market rate condos. I feel like also, you know, as I mentioned, talking to the school districts, you know, there is precedent for them leasing land or even maybe getting rid of some of their land. Perhaps there's some public land that we could sacrifice to desegregate the, the communities. And then also, I really like the idea that Commissioner Mercado mentioned about aggregating housing, opportunity sites, I guess, or just housing zones. I know that there is this concept of, of a housing overlay zone that has been successful in some communities to expedite permitting for housing. And I'm wondering if, you know, maybe we could take advantage of something like that and apply some of the same techniques that we applied in the, in the downtown precise plan, where we essentially like, you know, put together some, like a framework that would lead to high-quality, low-cost housing, high-quality aesthetics that blended to the neighborhoods and things like that, a lot of the same sort of, you know, very important criteria that we put together for the downtown precise plan. I'm wondering if we could apply to a, a housing overlay zone. Just a few thoughts. Great. All right. Well, with that, do, do the commissioners have any more questions or, or points? Go ahead, Ally.
Yeah, I was going to say, I, I recall hearing that there was no action tonight. Actually, I, the action would be to accept the report, so there would be an official action by the.
Oh, very good. Okay. Okay, great. Excellent. So I guess that will, that would require a vote. Leslie, please correct me if I'm wrong. Is that correct? We will vote on accepting the report? Okay, great.
Sure. Do we, we should probably have just an official, a, a motion and a second.
Right. Okay. Do we have a motion and a second to accept this report?
Move to accept the report, Commissioner Samutti?
I'll second Commissioner Mercado.
Great, thank you. Leslie, would you mind taking a roll call?
I would love to. Commissioner Harris is absent and Commissioner Hayman is absent. So Commissioner Mercado.
Yes.
Commissioner Samutti.
Yes.
Commissioner Shaw?
Yes.
Vice Chair Saudi?
Yes.
And Chair Privatalli?
Yes.
Report accepted.
Excellent. Thank you. All right. Well, thank you, Ally, Alexis and Liz. Thanks very much. That was excellent. Really appreciate it. All right, now we'll move on to the director's report.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, thank you, actually, all of you. That was a great conversation. And apologies for jumping in. I didn't want to.
It's all good.
Yeah, they left early. Yes, director's report. Let me just scroll down here. Oh, a few things. As I mentioned, for those of you who are here a little bit early, our first hybrid meeting is going to be August ninth. Yay! And so, and we are requesting all commissioners and staff, actually applicants, to be available in the council chambers. If you want to attend, but you are lamping or you are otherwise, you know, needing to quarantine, I do believe there is a way to attend virtually as well. So it, it definitely is a mix of attendees, so I don't want that to prohibit your participation if for some reason you can't make it into the chambers. Just make sure you, you know, a little extra communication ahead. And luckily, we have Ben and Danielle who'll be working with us on the hybrid, and they've done it very successfully at council, so I'm excited about that. The other thing, SB nine ordinance was approved by council on July eighteenth. It is going for the second reading on August first, which is Monday. There was slight modifications to the version that you saw based on feedback we received. So slightly more concerned. Um, so slightly more conservative, just so you know, is, um, limiting development, SB nine developments that involve a lot split to four units total. Um, the other change was to limit the height of S- the portions of SB nine developments that are located outside the district standards to sixteen feet. So you'd still be able to go the district height within the district setbacks, but to the four-foot rear and the four-foot side yard, it would be a sixteen-foot, um, height limit. And then the other change that they made at council was to, there was a election of standards in which, you know, the order of operations, you know, uh, to accommodate up to two eight-hundred-square-foot units. And so they chose to, we had natural state of applicable block coverage, and we switched it to the more restrictive of natural state of block coverage and then the less restrictive. Because the idea is to hopefully retain most of the development standards by opening up the top one and hopefully that we could accommodate the two eight-hundred-square-foot units. Um, so if you're interested, um, in the second reading, that will be on Monday. And that is all I had. Alexis mentioned the second workshop for the housing element, which I deleted since she mentioned it, I think it's the August sixteen. Um, either way, I went to the first one, and it was, there was a lot of robust conversation. So it'd be, you know, not that you don't volunteer enough, but if you wanted to participate in the second workshop, that would be amazing. And that's all I have today.
Great. Thanks, Leslie. Um, do the planning commissioners have any additional communication? Nope. All right, with that, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.